Stand for the pledge. Dr. Mullins, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a moment of silence for our policemen and women. Thank you.
Ready to start? 15 Park Lane, West New Milford. So I've got a lot of things to talk about. To begin, Board of Ed cuts. Loss of 1.4 million. Town council cut 800,000. Mayor cut 600,000. What comes to mind for me is the hire of Reardon was 70,000 because I think he gave 55,000 and then there was the benefits. I don't know an exact figure. It was never posted. The economic developer, up to 150 with benefits. No, that's going to come out to, if I was like, 250 approximately. I don't, so I'll try to go really fast. Those two salaries in ratio to the, to students in New Milford, I don't think it's an equitable ratio. One meeting, I think it was February 26th, there was a $1.5 million surplus that was stated. I want to know where it is, how is it being used? I think, okay. Next thing that's really important to me. A misrepresentation of governance. So, when you guys came in, you didn't, you didn't want people to be on multiple boards. I was one of them. Currently, you now have the following people on the following boards. Three people on these boards. That's, I won't, okay. Libra Furman is on Riverfront Charter Revision Brownfield. Paul Semansky, who's a town council member, he's on the Faculty Utilization Subcommittee, he's on the Charter Revision Committee. Joseph D. Gregorio, Charter Revision Committee Center. I'm trying to go really fast. Town Facility Utilization. Nick Poder, I'm saying name correctly. Community Center, Town Facilities, Farm Preservation. Frank Wargo, Riverfront, Community Center, Brownfield. Julian Bailey, Riverfront, Brownfield. Okay. Where is that fair? Where is that equitable? And the next, oh, actually, I think it will be down further. I think I forgot my other page. Okay, it's further down. Okay. I want to understand how municipal government works. I came, I went to see Attorney Grimes to understand the charter. I questioned the hiring or the firing of the deputy chief, Eleanor. I had, there was a ruling. I'd read it. Nowhere do I see in any of that information how it defines firing versus the position not being available. So, coming from a place of solution, I would like Attorney Grimes to be able to have a monthly seminar that would, that would teach me and maybe others how the charter works. Not only the charter, but the state statute. And this could be in conjunction with the charter revision. There's many things that are going on right now that I, I didn't put my name in for the charter revision, but I think there's things that need to be clarified. So I would like to be a part of the process and, and understand what's going on. And I hope that that can be put forth because I think it would help a lot of people. Now, questioning a potential, okay. One of the comments that you made Attorney Bass was that somebody, that the hires integrity, that Reardon questioned, they were questioning Reardon's integrity. I want to go back and I want to state that it wasn't the integrity, but it was her ability to do her job. It was her ability to have the skills, the education, and the performance capability. It wasn't, it wasn't about integrity. However...
Cindy, you have one more minute, please.
That's fine. Okay, great. I have more to say. Maybe I'll come, can I come back and say more? I have witnessed conduct amongst town council members that has been disparaging. You're smiling. That's, that's not acceptable. Council members can't make comments about other, other people. They can't make comments and they shouldn't be emotional. And that has happened more than once. Also, the petty, so this is really important. You have more, you've made two or three new committees, and on those committees, I think it ranges from seven to 12 people. The people, the people that I just read the names of, many of them are on the petty bone committee. I am asking for a reconfiguration of the appointees so that the number and the petty bone is aligned to the number of appointees of the new ones that you've put on. Because having 25 people on the committee is not going to work. I refer to it as Tower of Babel.
Cindy, you have a minute, please.
It would be, it would take Solomon, it would take the wisdom of Solomon to be able to get everybody to, to work together. So, one more, can I come back and do this? To share my information? Goodbye.
Thank you. Joe?
Good evening. Joe Coranta, tree warden for the town of New Milford. I have some stuff that I'd like to pass out to you guys. These are photographs that you'll have to share because my print is does not have a lot of ink left in it. I apologize. If you would just kind of share, there's little bit of stain.
Your honor, Joe?
Okay. So, the first thing I want to talk about is recently, there's been some discussion about the tree programs' performance as it relates to marking trees. Apparently, there was some mention last week that, I believe Mr. Councilman Esposito brought up that maybe we hadn't been marking trees, and I wanted to get that cleared up. And if you refer to that list, I apologize for the print being small. You'll notice a little line on there, okay? And from that line down, there are 52 trees, not including trees that were marked this week, that have been marked by me and slated for removal, okay? So, we've been doing our due diligence marking trees up until a meeting that we had in December, I believe it was December 27th, to be exact. And myself, the mayor, Mike Zarva, Mike Boucher were present at that meeting. And a group decision was made because we do not have a contractor lined up to remove tagged marked trees, that we weren't going to go out and continue to mark trees for the simple fact, and I think you'll remember our former tree warden acknowledging the fact that we don't want to mark trees and have them sitting on the side of the road marked for months and months on end, okay? So we were taking our trees on a per case basis. A resident would call in. We would look at those trees specifically, determine whether or not it needed to be removed, okay? And we would deal with them. We've had several instances that we've successfully completed. Councilman Gold has a piece of property between the town hall parking lot and, and a piece of property that he owns, so there's a perfect example, Mr. Gold. I think you'll, you know, remember that, okay? So, more importantly, if you look at that list, okay? Out of the 53 trees that I have marked, there are a vast majority of them that have not been cut down, okay? And that is out of my control. The list has trees that have been marked in October, October 21st, to be exact. And they are still currently standing in inventory as liability on the side of our roads. And I find that discouraging, at least. So, I have some solutions for that. I think it's going to take a little bit longer than my allotted few minutes here, so maybe I could speak at the end of public comments and we can let everybody else kind of get a shot at this. But I'd like to speak to you about that. I don't know if we have time tonight to talk about trees outside of public comments or if that's even on the agenda, but if it is, we can do it then. Thank you.
Chris?
Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Road. I'd like to talk tonight a little bit about the budget and the process that I've seen so far. And I've got to say, there's, you know, a couple of aspects of the budget that I'm not, you know, very happy with, an almost 4% budget increase for a state where Connecticut where already the second highest tax state in the country. And all the while, we're, the state's still bleeding red ink while we're at those high taxes. And I think high taxes will draw down our economy, potentially could draw down our economy more. And I'm also not thrilled about using some of our landfill settlement reserves to cover operating costs, which means we're not entirely living within our means. But I'm sure without a doubt, you're going to get a lot of other complaints about the budget. People are going to complain about cuts, positions eliminated, people hired. And when I sit back and I look at the big picture, there's probably not a single constituency in the town that's going to be entirely happy with this budget. And that tells me you've probably done a pretty good job at balancing, balancing the needs versus wants and with what we have. When I also look at the big picture, I know we lost $2.4 million in revenue targeted just for education funding. And $3 million in total from the state that the town lost between the town and our education funding, $3 million. It seems clear to me that the governor of the state targeted education more than anything in its cuts. And after listening to a lot of several budget presentations during this cycle, I also learned we have a lot of unfunded mandates that we deal with on the education side, on the town side from Hartford. And those are things that comes directly out of taxpayers' pockets year after year after year. This time, they didn't give a mandate, they just took the funding away. So, and, and I think if you were to have went along with the Board of Education's requested budget increase, we would have had over a 10% tax increase, which to me would have been totally unacceptable. And yet, with all those, the revenue cuts, you were able to keep the funding level year over year. On the bright side, you've included road and infrastructure improvements which have been put off for far too long, which we really need. You helped increase the size of our police force while controlling costs there. I think that these things will make the town run more efficiently and be more attractive. And you've done that while keeping the town budget flat. All in all, I think you all had a tremendously tough task put at your feet this year. But you chose, I think, to meet it head on and deal with it in a responsible fashion. I think using more of our reserves to cover costs, as, as a lot of people, I think, were requesting you to do, would have been irresponsible. And it would just kick the can down the road even further, and it wouldn't have solved any of the problems that we had. I think putting our fiscal house in order is key to making our town attractive, to starting new businesses and attracting businesses. And I think your budget this year is a major step in the right direction. And I appreciate your time, your thoughtfulness in this process, the visibility you provided the community by posting presentations so we could study it at our leisure, and your willingness to make some difficult decisions this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Jeff?
Jeff McBrady, 288 Kent Road. The charter was alluded to just before I stepped up here. And I have talked to several people that are on that board that's going to revise that charter for the town of New Milford. And they're going to work very diligently to try to make this charter revisions and updates more to the liking and the use of, of everybody in town. It'd be clarified a lot more and more understandable. So I trust that they'll be able to do the job. And as of late, the tough decisions that town councils had to make, and especially the mayor and some of the things that, that he had to do as part of the job. Okay, I don't think the mayor overstepped his boundaries when he laid off a couple of employees for the town of New Milford, and I applaud you for that. That's a tough decision to have to make. And I wouldn't want to be in your position and have to do that. So I feel that in the future, when everybody is, I made aware of all the changes to the town charter, that it will be something that will be very understandable and pretty much self-explanatory throughout. So I leave much trust in the people that are on that board to be able to do that job. As far as the budget, the town has had, agreed to a flat budget, no increase, which again is very tough. Have to work a lot of numbers and make a lot of changes to make this work. But I applaud you again for being able to come up with a flat budget for the town. I feel in my heart that the Board of Education needs to follow suit. If they don't, then it's going to make it that much more difficult for the taxpayer, okay? And I don't mind paying 27.25 per thousand dollars on my taxes. But then after that, to add another 3.87% on top of that, that makes it very difficult. So tonight, I'm asking you folks, when you do finally put everything to the Board of Finance, that I ask you to charge the Board of Finance to reach into their heart and think about everything and have them agree to do a flat budget for the Board of Education. I'm not against education because I know that the future of our town and the future of everything is in the children, okay? They are our future. But this is a very difficult and a very unusual year. And I would also like to ask someone on the town council if they would check into the state and find out where all the Lotto money goes, the interest gain on that, because that Lotto, Connecticut Lotto, was created to offset education. So why doesn't it ever get used for that? Why does it go to the general fund and get squandered every year? That's a, that's a massive waste because there's millions and millions of dollars in there, and there would be no reason for the town Board of Education to have a flat budget and be able to draw from that to offset what they're looking for. But the state is just not giving it, and that's not right. And I think somebody should step up to the plate and find out why they're not doing their job and doing their part. Last, our tree warden, on the budget that Paul presented, had a negative that's eliminating that job. I feel that'll be a great injustice to the town if that happens, okay? And a few line items down on that budget that Paul had, there was one item for 29,000-plus dollars for some health insurance. I don't know, Paul, if it was for one people or several, but I was with the understanding it was one, for one person.
Jeff, you have one minute, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If we have, one person having insurance coverage for 29,000 dollars, that's astronomical. And I feel if you're still going to cover that person for that kind of money, you can subtract 7,500 dollars from that, and they'll still have good health insurance, and we'll still have a tree warden. So I'm asking you to give that some very serious thought. Tree warden is essential. Joe is doing a marvelous job. He's volunteering a lot of his own time free to make this job happen. So I think that all of this needs to be taken very seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Cindy, do you have something?
Well, that was a great, thank you. I appreciate that about the water and the money. So, Board of Ed, the issue right now is that eight positions are being cut. And I need, I just needed to say that. Two other things. So, in response to the letter that was in the, the letter to the editor and somebody making up numbers, my response, my proposal is to get real information would need to get from the public. So, an online survey, maybe, to ask the town people what they, how they feel about the Budget Board of Ed, so on and so forth. I mean, you make decisions, but don't you want to hear from the townspeople? So if you did an online survey, if you put ballot, if you put boxes into municipal places, they would be able to answer the question too. It's a suggestion. One more thing, which I don't know where it is right now. Mr. Semansky, I would like you to be paying attention to me right now. I, I know one time you, I had to address that. I think it's not acceptable that you don't listen to what people are saying and listen to them. I know I'm taking up my time. Oh, I know. So when the figures were presented at the board meeting and two people were in here, and I thought it would be very valuable for all board members to be here to make the vote. And, and the issue of board members that are town, council members that are absent, I mean, it's, it seems to me that there's, Mr. Semansky, you're, really, I've seen you absent more than I've seen you present. And it was really amazing to me when, 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 to go back to leadership, Mr. Mayor Bass, you are, it was my belief that I would see you have leadership when the, when the budget cuts were going on, but it was Mr. Semansky. And Mr. Semansky's not even here half the time, so I'm a little confused by that. I mean, I think if all board members were saying something when the cuts were going on, I would understand that too. But I didn't understand why one person who's not even the mayor was making those cuts. It's supposed to be joint. So I, I, I think it's really important that town people, the town council members are respectful. I just watched when Mr. Semansky wasn't paying any attention to when Jeff was speaking. I, I find that just really difficult. Your job is to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Joe? Joe?
Okay, so where we left off was, we're marking trees, not all of them are getting cut, right? Okay. Some good stuff that came out of the storms. So we've had some big storms. The first storm was a doosie. It knocked down a bunch of trees. It was, I think we had 40 or 50 downed trees on wires. It was chaos. Figured out we didn't have a plan. Brought it to Mayor Bass the next day. Emergency meeting, he afforded me some of his time, was very receptive to the idea and immediately implemented an emergency management plan specifically on dealing with trees on wires and closed roads. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Moving forward, I don't know if any of you have seen this list that's been floating around for road closures that we have now. It's all part of Web EOC, having to do specifically with emergency management. We have a five emergency thresholds. So anything over five trees on wires or roads closed or so on and so forth, we enact that, Emergency Management Center. Brian Omen is our Emergency Management Director. He's going to head that. And so that'll give us the opportunity to inventory and prioritize our emergencies and deal with them accordingly. So that's a good thing. That's, that's a real step in the right direction. We have to come to terms with the old topic of from the time we mark the trees to the time they get cut. And in my opinion, the solution for that would be the exact opposite of what Mr. Semansky proposed the other night by removing the tree warden position, okay? And giving it to DPW. I would in fact do the opposite. If you read the Connecticut General statutes that I passed out, they're pretty clear. I mean, they're, I mean, I just don't think they could be any clearer, and I don't think we should deviate. It clearly states that the tree warden, okay? Do you want to follow along? Has the care and control of all the trees and shrubs in the right way, okay? But then it also goes as far as saying that the tree warden should be soliciting, hiring, signing off on the removal and the care of those trees. We don't do that in the town of New Milford. In New Milford, unlike any other town, the tree warden marks them. And then after that, it's in the hands of DPW. It's in their budget. They write the bid. They facilitate all that. And in order for that to work, we have to go through an exorbitant amount of steps until that tree is cut down. And it, there's a disconnect, communication, we'll call it, okay? And I think it's something that we can get away from. It's simple. I go out, myself or my assistant marks five trees. Mr. Emmons is one of our vendors. We call Mr. Emmons. "Mr. Emmons, do you have a day next week you can take care of some trees for us?" Yes. He comes out, he cuts the trees, and instead of waiting for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, four months, we effectively take care of tree problems within 10 days. So, so that's what I ask of this commission. And it's not something that we're going to figure out tonight, obviously, but give this some thought, and maybe one of you want to bring this up in the meeting on the agenda. But let's talk about maybe taking that $150,000 line item and making a budget, or making a line item for tree removal operations as it pertains to the tree warden, whether it be me or anyone else.
Joe, you have a minute, please.
If, if we're going to insist that the care and control of the trees and the responsibility falls on the tree warden, whoever that may be, I just think that we empower them to do so from start to finish. And I think that'll alleviate a lot of our problems. Thank you.
Is that it, Walter? Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Before I do Mayor's remarks... Sir? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Cizzoli. I'm a kindergarten teacher at North Bella Woman's School.
Can you state your address, ma'am, for the record?
Actually, I was at Willow Springs, and I actually moved just recently, but we still have a residence at Willow Springs. And what I am here tonight about is, of course, the Board of Ed budget. And I know that you guys have a, a great deal of concerns, and as a teacher in the district, I also had a concern, not because I think, I'm not going to say anything bad about it, but what I am going to say is, I ask you, or I implore you to please, think about not only just the teachers, but think about some of the things that are, the other ways that you can impact that budget rather than through the teachers. I know that there's been lots of talk about healthcare increases, salary increases, et cetera. As a teacher in the district, I can tell you that some of that is not accurate, and I would ask you to perhaps connect to the teachers and ask them where they think some changes could be made, because I know that it's not something that is often done. I would ask you to consider the fact that lower level positions that are on the possibility of being cut, reconsider cutting those, because what we're seeing in the classroom is very different than what it looks like on paper. For instance, there's collaborative classrooms of special ed students... For instance, there's collaborative classrooms of special ed students and regular ed students that have not had the support that they were supposed to have as a collaborative room. For instance, if a room is two-thirds regular ed and one-third special ed, there needs to be someone in there, not just a regular ed teacher. And there is a teacher that I know of off the top of my head that has had no support and just received it in March. As a town, we look for the growth of our students. We look to make educational gains everywhere in the district and become comparable to other districts in terms of those gains. However, the cuts that are being looked at will limit that. And when you look at a teacher budget and you look at the amount of teachers, and there are people that compare that to the number of students and divide, that's not how it works. There's lots of teachers within that budget. For instance, there's special areas, there's special education teachers, et cetera, that are not included in a classroom size. So while it may look like an eleven to one ratio, it's not. Last year, I had twenty-two students in my kindergarten class, nine of which were four when they started. And what happens is you don't have support necessarily for those kids that need it. And if you pull from special areas or pull from an art class or a music, those kids lose. If you pull a teacher and put them in a class with twenty-five kids, they lose. And your educational standards for those kids go down. So I'm asking you, is that fair to them? I get we wanna keep it as a taxpayer, the flat rate. I get it. I would want it. I don't want an increase. I don't want it to pay more in taxes. However, cutting from a teacher or cutting from programs that are necessity to those kids are not the areas to cut them. And if you're not sure or you haven't stepped into a school, I know all the kindergarten teachers at North Hill would be happy to have you come in and watch what we do. We'd be happy to have you come in and see what we have on a daily basis, to see some of the behaviors that aren't addressed, because nobody knows about them, to see some of the things and to reach all those kids that we need to reach on a regular basis. And I'm, I get teared because I'm passionate about what it is that I'm talking about, and I feel ridiculous. However, it is the truth. And to cut from that is wrong. There are areas, I'm sure, that you can tighten a belt and fix and get what you need, but that is not, those are not the areas that you can do it. Pulling a teacher or parent, thank you, is not the area that you can pull it from. Pulling from educational things like art and music and P E, which for some of these kids is the only time that they fit in with what's going on in our country, is not where you pull it from. So all I ask you is to talk to the teachers, to talk to somebody that is there on the front lines before you make your decisions. And please, thank you.
Jennifer, can you just sign that?
Yep.
Thank you, Walter. Next, we're gonna go to Mayor's remarks. So starting off first, we had our initial meeting for charter revision. The committee met. And the first initial public hearing will be Wednesday, the fourteenth of March at seven P M. And it will be at twenty-five Church Street, right across the street. Next, concerning the nor'easters that we've had. We've had two. We may have another one coming tonight. Joe had already spoken a little bit about what we've done so far. We set up an emergent, an emergency management plan that kicks into effect when we have certain thresholds, one of them being trees on, on power lines. Also, we've communicated with our community care team that we set up, which, when it meets a threshold, we then open up not only the shelter at night, which is every night, but then also we, it'll be loaves and fishes of the library so that those patrons can stay warm throughout the day till the next shelter comes. Also, been in touch with Eversource. They still have crews that are here. They have crews depending on, they're figuring the east is gonna get hit more than here we have in the west, but they're still staging equipment for when and if we do have continual power, power outages. They're pretty much caught up with the homes from the last storm. There may be a few that are out still. They were, they called one-offs. There may be that the line got ripped off the actual house or whatnot. They're continually working on that to make sure that every home has electricity. Next, I'd like to thank the Historical Society. They always do a great job. They're the keepers of our history. They did the one-hundredth anniversary for Chief Warmog. That's the papier-mache wood horse that used to be outside, over here on the porch, over on Railroad Street for many, many years. So for those of us that have been around long enough, that horse, especially to my wife, had a very big significance in her life. So I thank the Historical Society for that. Next, moving on to the trees, as our tree warden talked about. I'd just like to touch upon that for a few moments. So when I came into office, it was a very big contentious issue, the trees, and what was going on with the trees. And the first thing that happened was we moved from a local bid process that was broken to a state process. So interestingly enough, we moved to the state process, and low and behold, I believe it's fourteen trees, cost this town twenty-five thousand dollars. So you know what I did? No, we're not doing that anymore. We're gonna stop, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna do two things. First, if there's a tree that's an emergency, we are going to a hundred percent get that tree down. We're gonna take care of that. But no way am I going to sign off on a bid that costs that town, this town, the town we love, twenty-five grand. That's not happening. So I met with all the partners. That would be tree warden, that would be assistant tree warden, that would be part, the public part, uh, uh, Public Works, all the stakeholders to come up with a correct bid process. We tried initially, didn't work too well. We're continuing to move forward and make sure by the end of the week, we are going to have a true bid that can go out to our local vendors to make it A, worth their while, B, it's to the taxpayers' advantage, and C, it's something we can keep track of. I spoke with, with Public Works Director Mike Zarba today. We have a management system called, called Care Cartograph, I think is the name of it. I'm probably mispronouncing it. And that's gonna be able for us to track the trees. When they come down or need to be marked, they're gonna be entered in that system. We're gonna be able to see it and monitor it and take care of it. This will be on the next town council agenda, where I can update you, let you know, let you know the bid went out and how we're moving forward. But the reason why I wanted to tell the council that we haven't chopped these trees down is because we're not gonna spend an abhorrent amount of money on these trees. Next, I wanna talk a little bit about the town and our Board of Education partners, which we've been meeting pretty much, Chairman Lawson could say, probably every ten days. As we all know, we've tried to still come up with the seven hundred thousand dollars that we need to come up with to cover this year's reduction in state aid. So we've been meeting, talking about everything, how we can close that gap, and I will continue to do so as we move forward in this municipal year. Also, we're looking at the Internal Service Fund. We've been using it for many, many years. And as of right now, as Mr. Asapoff has told us during budget, that right now, he's showing that that cannot be used towards tax relief. We are meeting with Lockton, which is our insurance consultant, again, in the middle of the month, and we're gonna be revisiting that as well, so that we can see, does this plan benefit New Milford? Benefit its, its plan, the plan both for the Board of Ed and for the town? So we'll be talking to you again about that towards the end of the month. But I just wanted to reassure the council that we are working together with our Board of Ed partners on the seven hundred thousand and also the Internal Service Fund. The next one is on Thursday, this Thursday, seven P M. At John Pettibone, we're having our first Community Center Subcommittee. So for those of the public who would like to attend, we'd love for you to, to come, see the building and see the Subcommittee and how we begin the process. And lastly, on, make sure I got the right date here. Seven P M. On Thursday, March twenty-ninth, at seven P M. at the E. Paul Martin Room, I'm gonna give a State of the Town address to the public. So if those could come, that would be great. We're also gonna film it so it could be on YouTube. So that'd be March twenty-ninth, seven P M. here at the E. Paul Martin Room. Thank you. Next, approval of prior minutes.
Show move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is the discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms. So this was brought up actually by Ms. Davis towards our Roberts Rules of Order and thought it was a good idea to have a sergeant-at-arms. If we do decide, the council decides to do that, Mr. Skelly has, uh, said that he would be a sergeant-at-arms. So is there a motion to appoint a sergeant-at-arms?
So make a motion to appoint that Mr. Skelly as such, sergeant-at-arms of the council.
Second.
Any discussion?
What if, what if they actually do?
So that basically they would keep order within the council itself. So if there was, um, uh, misappropriate behavior, they could, uh, ask that person or escort that person out of the room. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next?
Discussion and regarding the reappointment of Dr. James, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. Scrimgor?
Scrimger.
Scrimger, as the honorary Town of New Milford poet laureate. It's a two-year honorary position. Will run from March twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen through March twenty-ninth of twenty twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? I spoke with Dr. James. He's very excited about continuing on. He's done a great job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Discussion and action regarding rescinding the motion from last meeting to authorize the mayor to sign a certified resolution to apply pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section thirty-two dash seven sixty-three, for financial assistance in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for developing the comprehensive plan for redevelopment multiple brownfields. It's called the Brownfield Area-Wide Revitalization or BAR Planning Grant to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development. The town of New Milford respectfully requests that the Brownfield BAR Planning Grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for preparation of a New Milford Riverfront Revitalization Master Plan. Uh, the reason be rescinded, uh, the motion of February the twenty-sixth did inadvertently not include an attachment when it was presented to the town council.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Uh, now we'd like to move that we certify a resolution of the Town of New Milford as prevent, presented in attachment seven B. Everybody have their attachment seven B?
Does that seven B? Attached to the minutes.
Attached to the minutes.
Tricky.
Tell me, you have one?
To be or not to be? I'm sorry.
I gotta three minutes.
Everybody has it.
Does everybody have it?
So Katie, you just, you, you moved, is that, is that, does that, so I just move this?
I moved the re-recind that was voted on, and now I have moved that we, uh, take the certified resolution as presented in seven B.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So I move, uh, that we establish a steering committee for the Brownfield Area-Wide Revitalization Planning Grant Program. The steering committee would consist of seven members for a duration of six months, beginning March twelfth, twenty eighteen, ending September tenth, twenty eighteen. Uh, the Department of, uh, let me go back and tell you exactly what that stands for. The Department of Economic and Community Development recognizes the importance of having established partnerships and the success of the BAR Planning Program. Therefore, the Department of Economic and Community Development expects all applicants to have formed the advisory slash steering committee prior to submitting an application. Five points will be automatically awarded to all applicants that can demonstrate the presence of an advisory slash steering committee. The BAR Planning Grant Program Steering Committee that we would have appointments are from March twelfth, twenty eighteen through September tenth, twenty eighteen. The following people, Leva H. Furman, Julianne K. Bailey, Christopher P. Gardner, Peter Schmidt, Lucy Wildrick, Richard V. Rosellio, and Frank Wargo.
Second.
Any discussion? Kathy's here, please. Kathy, can you come up? Doctor Mo?
Maybe it's my odd sense of humor, but five points will be automatically awarded to Gryffindor for all applicants that can demonstrate, I mean, what, what do five points mean? I mean, does something happen at graduation?
It could be two hundred thousand dollars that we don't get if we don't do this.
So literally, by having this committee...
Every point counts.
It does.
It's the difference between getting the grant and not getting it.
It's just basically, it's the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, and we just also have appointed them as a steering committee as well.
And we get five points. Do we get a gold star too?
Whatever they want.
Come on.
It just sounds so silly.
I agree.
How else do we get points?
If we deliver brownies to them, we get five more points? I mean, you either do it or you don't do it. What are the rules?
You mean, the state of Connecticut, those things are silly?
I'm sorry, I just...
I agree. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Complete Streets. Anybody have any questions on that? We're still getting some more information.
Are you going to add it?
No.
And just for, just to reinforce for those in our public area that there's, uh, we have until the twelfth of April to act upon this.
Yeah. My only, I mean, as a colleague, my only concern is to put undue burden on any kind of, any development that's going on, because as we know, it's not going on a lot. I know it's two percent, doesn't seem like a lot, but if it's a big project, it could be a lot. So that's just my concern. It's just that we're not blowing out of time, just wanted to...
Let me, I'm sorry, Michael, I didn't know what you were referring to.
There's a, in that...
Complete Streets.
Right, I know it's Complete Streets, but what would the...
There's two percent, um, what's the word?
Requirement?
Requirement. You could, we could require any new project would put two percent into a fund for doing pedestrian-friendly projects. Is that, am I correctly stating it that way?
And what would that two percent go towards?
Uh, sidewalks, I guess there could be a river trail, I'm not sure what exactly where it could go.
Wouldn't zoning want sidewalks in most of these projects on the...
No, they could take it from project, a cul-de-sac could resource to pay two percent to a fund. And if I'm not correct, so I'm correct, but that's how I wrote it.
No, you're correct. So if we chip Sailor Road, we'd have to put two percent of that budget towards a sidewalk or something else.
Right. So I mean, I guess it's just, you need to be clarified or, or something, or just look at this.
That's why we're still talking about it. So there you go. That's a good question.
All right. Thanks, Michael.
Just so the, the public is aware, and Councilman Bill Mayhams' first ordinance, uh, how an ordinance works is, uh, after the public hearing, which was on the twenty-sixth, the council can either approve the ordinance as submitted, can amend the ordinance as submitted, turn it down, or if it takes no action by, uh, April twelfth, it dies a natural death, so to speak. Those are the council's options between now and the twelfth.
Thank you.
Next personnel.
All right. Uh, move action on the recommendation of the Job Description Subcommittee to... to accept the updated job description for the tax assessor. And that is in your attachments. It's page nine. Yes, or page 22, depending where you're looking. Item nine, page 22.
There's the old and then the new. Any discussion? Do you have a second? Thank you, Mike.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Greg, did you want to come up and talk a little bit about it?
I have a question for Paul.
Yep, Paul?
So is the idea then that under essential job functions, we keep updating that first poll point every time our brand list changes? Or is that more generic?
Yeah, so I wanted to just thank Katie and Lisa again. You've been doing really well with the Job Description Subcommittee.
Okay, well, we have a question, and I have a question as well, as Paul just brought up.
Yep.
Please, that's it.
It was just the first thing under essential job functions. When I was reading it the other day, it's just very specific. So is the idea when our brand list changes, do you then update the job description or?
We can absolutely do that. If we also, if we want to adjust that down and make it more generalized, then we could just do, compile as a brand list and the valuation of taxable property.
That's what I thought we were going to do, was to have over 13,600 parcels with a valuation of taxable property over three billion. And these other ones are sort of specific for things.
So we can eliminate that.
Doesn't matter. I mean, I'm okay with it.
Well, you wouldn't want to have to update it every time things change. I also have a question, Greg, that I guess I didn't pay close enough attention to this. If this is how it was. But on the working conditions, you know, the new thing you have where we X off occasionally, frequently, constantly. I'm curious as to why frequent exposure to chemicals and bodily fluids is in the assessor's job description.
The only reason why that it would be frequent would only be through the town cleaning as to what's going on. So when you actually have Cindy.
Does every office person have that in their job working conditions?
I've put it into frequent, not, not to the point of a constant, but to the frequent, because we do have Cindy coming in at least once or twice.
Everybody that works here?
Yeah. Just as an exposure, because when she's cleaning the windows, when she's wiping down the desks, there are chemicals.
The bodily fluid kind of gets me. Maybe we could go into the chemicals, but I don't know. Okay, and the other question I had was under sitting, you have occasionally. And if the standing and the walking, I think the sitting should be constant or consistent, or constant is what it stands for. Not that I think that, you know, the person's going to while away the hours, but I, I wouldn't say it's occasional, right? Or frequent, perhaps?
I think the change to frequent would be appropriate.
I mean, it's more of an allowable than anything else, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the change to frequently would be appropriate.
And what does handling refer to? Handling, handling whatever's in your job, documents, shovels?
So handling can be papers, it can be shovels, it could be large boxes, it could be files.
Whatever your job entails, then. Okay. Just checking. Thanks.
Any other questions? And the reason for putting it on tonight is, as we heard during budget deliberations, Kathy is going to be retiring at the end of the year. So knowing that this position is a difficult one to fill, we're trying to get it out to all of the places where we post this job. And we're just trying to get it out now as soon as possible.
As we talked, this will be a very difficult position to fill. It's going to take some time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Move to request transfer of funds, $10,000 from Assessor Legal Account 104-13900/53108 to Tax Rebates and Refunds, 10413700/59500. The transfer is to cover refunds and rebates through June 30th, 2018. The Assessor Legal Account has a balance of $15,125. There are no new appeals that would affect this fiscal year. And final invoices to Kramer and Anderson for previous appeals have been paid.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Jim Furlow isn't here, but you want to move this anyway?
He will be here.
He'll be here a little bit later. I don't know.
Right. I'd like to move, well, first of all, let me lead in. The Inland Wetlands Commission has encumbered all $8,000 of the significant activity fee account for ongoing projects. More than half of the monies expended have been reimbursed to the town. So I'd like to move that the Inland Wetland Commission request for an increase of the additional $4,000 and additional $4,000 be added to both the expenditure account, and the revenue account, to bring the total of $12,000, to bring it up to $12,000 to cover the use of an outside consultant for additional projects. This is a self-sustaining account.
Any discussion?
Katie, I don't want to be picky, but could you just go back to the first number you read on the expenditure account?
First number, an expenditure, expenditures is 104-15700.
Thank you, that's all I need. I just heard it. Sorry.
Do we?
But basically you're.
Right, so he's adding some revenues that he's going to be getting, and then he's just upping his expenditures to cover the additional revenue.
Yeah, I asked Greg Osepoff today. Just when they hire an outside consultant by state statute, the town has to be reimbursed. So it's just Jim's hired outside consultants more this year, so it's revenue neutral.
So the person who the project has to pay.
Pay for it.
Yep. Any other discussion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I move the Parks and Recreation Commission, the request. Oh, Jim.
He was outside the wall, Lisa.
Move to accept the Parks and Recreation Commission request to accept a donation of $612 from the Candlewood Lake Authority for the purchase of an outer park bench which will be installed at Lynn Demming. The donation is to be placed in the Park Gift Fund.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move that the Parks and Rec accept, we accept the request from the New Milford Rotary Club for a donation of $1,900 for the purchase of a park bench and concrete pad to be installed at the Youngs Field Riverwalk. This donation is to be placed in the Park Gift Fund.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Item 13. Discussion and moving this, we can discuss, regarding a resolution appropriating $6 million. $6 million for the planning, acquisition, and construction of road. I have it.
Oh, you got it.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exactly the same. Moving appropriating $6 million for the planning, acquisition, and construction of road improvements, 2018 to 2019, and authorizing the issue of a $6 million bond to the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of a temporary borrowings, of a, of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Second.
I will introduce this resolution, so you can all hear it one more time. This is exactly how it has to be read. It's resolved that the resolution entitled resolution appropriating $6 million for the planning, acquisition, and construction of road improvements, 2018, 2019, and authorizing the issue of $6 million bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. You have to vote before I can continue.
Second.
You have to vote on it.
No, you have to waive the resolution. You have to.
I can't say it's hereby adopted and recommend. Oh, it's hereby adopted and recommended for approval.
Waive the reading of the resolution first, and then you can adopt a resolution.
Well, I have what I have here. Is there a motion and a second to waive the reading of the entitled resolution incorporating full text into the meetings of this minutes of this meeting?
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
So Katie, you're moving the resolution?
That motion passes. There are no oppositions, correct?
Yep.
Okay, is there, there has been a motion. Is there a second to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Dr. Mo?
Let me just clarify. This is just to adopt the resolution.
Correct.
Thank you.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Would you like to have a roll call vote?
It was unanimous, right?
Was it unanimous?
Oh.
No, I'm, it's unanimous to me. I'm not requesting a roll call vote.
Okay, good. All right, then the motion passes, and the resolution is adopted.
Okay. Next.
Can I just ask a question on this? When does it determine the time that this bond will be paid off? Is it a five-year bond, 10-year bond? When will that be determined?
I'll have Mr. Osepoff come at the next meeting and tell us the terms of the, of the bond or the band, and move from there. And give you kind of the interest rate down as well.
In the attachment that's in your packet, there are.
Don't make me read that.
I'm just, you know, if you're prefacing.
I tried reading this, Katie, I fell asleep.
I know I did too, but I read it twice. So it is in here.
Some terms towards the back.
The timeframe was in here too?
It, it references the. It references, I believe, when it must happen, not before or not after, but as far as our town time. You'd have to speak as Pete said, with finance. But he'll come, right?
Yep.
I didn't see a timeframe for it.
It's not, it's not like a timeline. It's part of the language.
Okay. I took that timeframe interest, what are we getting per year stuff like?
Oh, that's filled out. It needs to be done. Okay, ready? Done? Motion to create an Arbor Tree Subcommittee consisting of six members for a duration of six months, beginning March 12th, 2018, ending September 10th, 2018, to report back to the mayor and town council on the following: promoting tree health and sustainability and the planting of the annual Arbor Day Tree.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move the creation of the Youth Field Subcommittee, Fields Subcommittee, consisting of seven members for a duration of six months, beginning March 12th, 2018, ending September 10th, 2018, to report back to the mayor and the town council on the following: future needs for our youth fields.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this my question? Yeah, did you, are these committees, all three of these, I guess, do you have people in mind, or you want suggestions or?
Suggestions, there are a few people that have already wanted to be on this. I know, as I spoke at the last council meeting, Mr. Pillow, who was chairing the Youth Fields Subcommittee prior to, wanted to be back on that committee, but taking names for the rest, whoever is interested, that'd be great.
Now you want me to email you?
Can email? That'd be great. Dr. Mo?
Just on the timeframe. So we're not going to be naming the people to these committees for at least two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Then, should we bump the date out two weeks?
Okay.
To the 26th? Again, six months, doesn't matter?
It's the, Dr. Mo, the conventional wisdom would tell you yes, but the, it's from the date the council makes the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
So it says fu- future needs for youth fields. So is that all they're being charged for?
Should be. It should be, instead of youth, it should be future needs for, I would say, all fields.
Yeah. So they're going to reach out to all the youth organizations?
Correct.
And raise.
Yep.
See what the needs are. And then as part of it, are they going to see what we're currently providing? And what the disparity is between what we're providing and what we need.
This would be for adult?
Well, the future needs is all fields, because there may be some fields that are both youth and adult already.
Yeah, soft bones.
Right.
So the, and would be future needs for all fields.
How about we say now, you don't want cornfields in there? How about athletic slash recreational fields?
Perfect.
Does that?
Yeah, I kind of wondered. Athletic, recreational.
So I make a motion to amend it, the last sentence to read, future needs for athletic and/or recreational fields.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have to vote on the main motion, right? Do we have a second, right time to second it?
I second it to Dr. Mo, but Walter seconded it first.
Got you.
Give him the first second on that.
Any, any discussion on the main motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Move to create a nonprofit Subcommittee consisting of three members for a duration of six months, beginning March 12th, 2018, ending September 10th, 2018, to report back to the mayor and the town council on the following: addressing the funding process for nonprofit requests.
So we.
Can I ask that you add in the funding process for nonprofit requests to town council or budget? Put some other word in there, not just requests in general. I think that's too loose.
To town council and board of finance?
No, I'm not worried about what they're asking for. It's to whom?
To town council and board of finance?
Yeah. Town council and board of finance?
Thanks.
And this is to address what we spoke about at budget. For some of the nonprofits, there wasn't a process in place for them to request funding. And in this request, this way, there's an actual process where we can tell them when they need to bring their funding in, what the, what the proper procedure would be.
What criteria?
What criteria?
For the, for the organization itself?
Yep. And this would be three, if it could be three town council members, that'd be even better.
Three town council members.
Is that what's on?
Dr. Mo?
One here?
Yep.
Oh, this amendment?
You make the three volunteers, all these town council members.
Correct.
Well, I don't know if I want that. I want somebody else to do it. Well, I don't know if I want that, I want someone to be on there too.
Okay, that's fine.
Dr. Mull?
Uh, this is my exact thought.
Okay.
I, I don't think, because they're reporting back to us and finance, I don't think anyone from town council or finance should be on this. Um, I, I haven't really thought about where the three would come from, but I just don't think, since they're reporting back here, that they should be from this group or the finance group.
I understand your thinking there. I also think that someone from the town council has to be involved to really fully explain, integrate the process as it exists, and how it would or would not be facilitated, or expedited, or in any, I mean, I think there's too many areas of the budget that are not known.
I, I agree with both of you. I think it needs to be five people, a council member, a finance member, and three people from the community. That's my thought. At least four.
That's a good idea. I, I'd like.
That's fine.
Unmotion, unmotion to amend that? A visual motion, I guess?
Why are we supporting nonprofits? I, I really don't understand that. Why is the town supporting nonprofits when they can go out and hustle and make their own money? What, what is the whole purpose? There's some. I just don't quite get that.
I think they'll make exceptions for town nonprofits to do a function of the town government, the cemetery, the children's, that's why we wanna create this, so that if we're giving money to a nonprofit, there's a reason behind why we're giving it, and that, in my mind, we want them. They're, you know, the, you know, we've gone through the reasons why those, top, those nonprofits actually get money from us, just like Loews and Fishes, they're the ones manning the warming stations for us during the cold times. So they're helping the town out, as opposed to otherwise, we'd have to do something here with town employees, so it actually saves us money longer.
So this is a streamlined process.
They try and come up with a reason, not say, you know what, I like that nonprofit, let's give them money. That's the point, is try and put.
Exactly. Great, thank you.
I believe there needs to be criteria set. Um, I, I mean, it's wonderful to wanna give money to everybody, but I have a problem in being involved in being a member of a lot of nonprofit organizations and not-for-profit organizations, and some who are really not considered not-for-profit, although they do great things in our community. I think that if it's going to become part of the money that is spent, uh, or removed from the budget, whichever way you wanna look, I mean, every time we say no to somebody, or we say yes to somebody, that's a no to somebody else. I think it's important for the taxpayers and for the organizations that it be a fair and equitable process. And, uh, if we had that at least defined, then the, then the discussion of, does it belong in our budgetary process, which I think is a very good question. But without a process to start with, it's hard to envision how it would really work, other than what we've seen, which is, somebody sends in a letter.
So, do, have we already done the motion that it's gonna be five people?
You had a motion, but nobody seconded it at the moment.
But not with, this is with three, the way it was originally written on here?
But nobody seconded, nobody seconded the first motion, so there is.
Nope, so there's no one did.
No one did? Oh, I'm sorry.
I made the motion to, uh, adjust the nonprofit subcommittee to five members, three members from, um, two members, one from board of finance, one from town council, and three members from outside those two groups.
And that they'll report back to board of finance and town council, that is.
Yes.
And a second from Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, move the appointment to the Town Facilities Utilization Subcommittee of Chris Cosgrove, term to be March twelfth, twenty eighteen, through August thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.